Well, thank you very much, everybody. I'm gonna call the Montclair City Council meeting to order. Hope you all like the new, uh, the light that we have for our holiday, we're getting ready for our holiday season, so we decided to brighten up with, uh, City of Montclair logo. So, John, good job, John. I think council likes it. And we'll begin with the invocation and the pledge allegiance. And, uh, go ahead, Andrea.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Joe Conno of Gracious Living Church in Upland, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Father, we just, um, call your presence, Father, in the day that we live in, we need so, so much wisdom, far beyond what we're capable of having. In Romans 13, you ask us to acknowledge and follow our governing authorities, and that's what we're here today to do. But then you've always, you also asked us in 1 Timothy 2:11 that we would pray and encourage our leaders too as well. So, Father, this evening, I ask that you would encourage these council members and the mayor, Lord, Father, that you encourage the police force, Father, the fire departments, God, all the workers, Lord, Father, that you give them wisdom, because they come together to sort things out this evening, God. If they don't come together for a city, they come together for people, because people make up Montclair, God. But, Father, give them wisdom beyond their years, Father. Let them have a good time this evening, God. Let them enjoy each other throughout the year, Lord. And, Father, we ask that your blessing would be upon this city and these decisions for them, so they can see the things that you see, Father, in people and in their administration, Lord. We thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the salute to the flag of the greatest country on this globe. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, if you can still stand, uh, obviously today is the one-year anniversary of what took place in Israel, and I think this has been a proper opportunity for us to remember all those who lost lives in Israel, Gaza, Lebanon, of course, the other parts of the Middle East. And let's also remember all the lives, uh, that were lost and all the lives being affected because of the hurricane that took place in the southeastern portion of the United States. Just hold a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, do me. How about roll call?
Uh, first, I'd like to state that Councilmember Rue has been excused and will not be in attendance at tonight's meeting. Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
I'm here.
And Mayor Dutre?
I'm present.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go down to the public comment. This is obviously an opportunity for the public to speak to the council on the items on the agenda. You have five minutes. You also can speak on items on the consent calendar as well. So, Andrea, do we have any speakers? I believe you told me you have speakers on consent calendar items?
Yes, and then one for general comment.
All right, let's just take all three of them here. If you want to throw a general comment first.
Okay. Carolyn Raft.
Okay, general, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. It's nice to have my voice back. So, I, uh, wanted to let you know that even with all the heat that's been going on, actually, as far as Montclair and even the nearest surrounding cities, there's really been nothing to report. So, we're doing pretty good. And I, I wanted to comment on B4. Do I do that now, or do you want to wait?
Let's do it right now. Actually, I should, I should push that button. Go ahead, B4.
Oh, okay. I, I would like to find out, because I know that, uh, we are, there's 550 people that have signed up for the baskets for the holidays. And I would like to know from Ms. Richter if that is something, is it more now? Or has, is it decreased with this economy? I'm expecting maybe you to say more.
We actually haven't started the applications yet. We'll be doing the applications the first week of November.
Okay.
But we will be taking reservations from any families that are interested in applying for the baskets. So, last year's numbers, um, that's a good, fair estimate of 500, over 550 that were, um, reached. But we also have the children in there and parents, and then the toys too that, um, are added into that, so.
Oh, okay. So, you won't know the figures until right before you get ready to?
Well, we won't know the figures right until probably mid-November after the applications are all done and approved.
Oh, okay. I'm asking because our family always gives for the baskets, and I want to make sure that you're gonna have enough.
Right. I'll be happy to give you those numbers once we have those two.
Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Great. And then Xavier. Mendez.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers, staff. Um, just a couple of things. Um, one, yeah, I noticed the, um, the news sign with the lights behind it. Looks really professional. Good job, John. Wherever he is, he's gone. I noticed that when I first walked in. But, uh, again, on the turkeys and the giveaway from the Montclair Community Foundation, it's, um, always a wonderful thing, and I've always appreciated, you know, that we do that in the city and continue to do that and give toys and baskets. And I just, I did it for years, so I remember, you know, all the people that were very appreciative of it. I, I know in here I talked about, you know, disadvantaged children also, and I'm just wondering what qualifies somebody as a disadvantaged child? Or the families, if that, that information is online, or, because I've had a, I was, I've been out talking to a lot of people, and, you know, I've been telling them about this, that you guys do, and some people are interested. I just don't know what the qualifications are. I don't know if that's something that you guys can talk about.
We encourage everyone that thinks they can, they qualify to apply. Uh, we use the federal poverty guidelines as our schedule. It is based, though, I don't have it memorized, but it's based on the number of family members and their income. So, once they come in and apply, and also some families, um, they may be right on the border of that, the cusp of the, what's required, and they may have had some type of a family emergency. Maybe somebody was in the hospital, they had a medical emergency, and so we'll listen to those. That's why we do the in-person applications, so that, you know, if they have a situation like that, then, um, you know, their income may be just above, but because of that situation, we would probably approve them. So, yeah, just, I would just, as you talk to people, encourage them to call. And over here, I have the flyers and a phone number to call to schedule to fill out an application.
Maybe I'll grab a couple of those.
Yes.
And then, um, the second thing, just, um, nice to see that the city received the grant for $61,000 to, um, help with the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, STEP Grant. Nice to get the officers out there. I know, you know, just with having full staff. I was talking to Brian and Jason about it a little bit. It's nice that they're able to get back out there and do these types of programs. So, it'll be good to see everyone out there. And other than that, um, just getting ready for the big campaign month, and I will see everybody out there. And thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's it. So, now we'll go down to consent calendar items. So, Ben, you have anything you want to pull?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
How about my left?
I have nothing.
I have one quick comment, Mr. Mayor, on B4.
All right, B4 is a hot item today. Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to quickly report that, um, every year, the Montclair Chamber of Commerce delivers the donation baskets to businesses. And last year, we really thought we had an all-time high of 29, um, boxes that were delivered to businesses to, for the donations. And I'm happy to report that this year, we are at 65 and climbing. So, we'll be getting quite a few donations this year, and hopefully, we can make all of those people who need us happy, because they got everything they needed. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Lopez?
I was gonna make a motion, sir.
Go ahead.
I move the adoption of the consent calendar as presented, sir.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Lopez, seconded by Ms. Johnson. Guess we'll do electronic vote. There it is. And the vote's gonna be, I bet you'll be 4-0. Yep, 4-0 with one member absent. Okay. Now, we'll go all the way down to communications, and we're gonna keep Marcia busy tonight. Go ahead.
All right. I just have a few announcements. October's a busy month for us in Human Services. We have the City of Montclair Health Fair will be this Thursday, October 10th, from 9:00 to 12:00 noon inside our community center. The event will offer free community health screenings for all ages and also educational exhibits. We'll have free flu and COVID-19 shots. We'll also be available for participants at the event, along with over 40 health and wellness vendors with resources for the community. Next week, on Wednesday, October 16th, from 7:00 to 8:30, the 2024 Candidates Forum will take place here in our council chambers. It's sponsored by the Community Activities Commission and the Montclair Chamber of Commerce. The forum will be filmed and streamed live on the city's YouTube channel, as well as Zoom, and that link can be found on the city website for those who want to watch from home. The event will also be broadcast on Montclair's Public Access Channel every evening at 7:00 PM, beginning on Monday, October 21st, through Election Day on Tuesday, November 5th. Questions can be submitted in advance on our website, and in-person attendees will be able to submit questions at the event. Due to limited time, not all questions submitted may be asked. All city council candidates have been invited to participate, and all have confirmed they will be in attendance. If a member of the public is in need of food, they may attend our city monthly food distribution in our community center on Thursday, October 17th, from 9:30 to 10:30, or the Feeding America Food Pantry in the Recreation Center Courtyard on Wednesday, October 23rd, from 9:00 to 11:00. Both of those are available while supplies last. Human Services Department will be taking our holiday food and toy basket applications by appointment. Appointments must be made by Friday, I mean, by Thursday, October 17th, by calling, um, our city number 909-625-9483. I have flyers over here too, if anybody's interested that has the number on that. Eligible applicants must live in Montclair and meet specific income guidelines. Families wishing to apply who have a child that attends a Montclair Elementary or middle school should contact their school office for additional program information. Donations will be taken at the Recreation Center through December 13th, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. You can join us on Thursday, October 24th, 6:30 to 8:00, in the community center for our City of Montclair's After-School Program. MAP will be participating in Lights On After-School. This is a nationwide celebration of programs that extend beyond the regular school day, and we will be celebrating our 25th silver anniversary this year, providing after-school programs to Ontario Montclair School District. This year's theme is "MAP is Major League." The event will focus on American history through a study of America's favorite pastime, baseball. Other activities will include a display of student projects and performances, awards, games, opportunity drawings, and more. And finally, our City Halloween Spooktacular will be held on Saturday, October 26th, from 6:00 to 9:00. It'll be at the Montclair Place Mall. The haunting evening will include trick-or-treating, kids' crafts, carnival-style games, a costume contest, a live DJ, and other ghoulish surprises for the whole family. Uh, don't miss the inflatable spooky haunted maze for those brave souls who wish to enter. Just don't get lost. And our popular Halloween costume contest, judged by our Community Activities Commission, begins at 7:30 at the main stage at Center Court, with contestants howling for the title of most scariest, most cutest, most unique, and best-in-family in age-appropriate categories 0 to 6 years and 7 to 12 years old. The best-in-family category is for two or more family members, all ages dressed in a costume, I mean, in a theme. The event is free, thanks to our sponsors this year, who include Montclair Place, Bertec, West Coast Arboris, and the Women's Club of Montclair.
That's a lot going on here. Unfortunately, I'm not gonna be here for the MAP After-School Program and the Halloween, uh, event at Montclair Place. I'll be out of town, but, uh, I do love baseball, but, uh, I wish, uh, everybody to have fun at those events.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we will go on to our city attorney.
Woo, that's a tough act to follow, all the fun stuff. All right, then to the not-so-fun stuff. Two items on the agenda, as indicated. One is to meet in closed session regarding pending litigation, Cities of Ontario, Montclair and Chino versus the Inland Empires Utility Agency. The second item is to meet in closed session regarding labor negotiations involving the indicated bargaining groups with our designated labor negotiator, Mr. Starr.
Perfect.
I have nothing else this evening.
Mr. Starr. Items, little items. Well, this evening, I want to, I'd like to adjourn the meeting for two individuals. First individual is Regina Davis. Uh, she was a former employee of the Montclair Police Department as a police services specialist. And the second individual would be Bruce Lance. He was the, uh, retired attorney for Monavista Water District, who also recently passed. I'd just like to recognize in October, uh, during the month of October, it will be Ramadan with the Muslim community, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the Filipino-American History Month, the Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month, the LGBT History Month, and the Polish-American Heritage Months. I did attend the ICSC conference that was held in, um, in Palm Springs two weeks ago, and I just had a chance to, uh, spend a day there with staff and the different vendors that came to our booth. And obviously, I walked around and went to the, uh, the education sessions as well. And, uh, I know we had some good information that came through our booth about some possible economic opportunities here in Montclair. And with that, I will start with, uh, Councilmember Martinez.
I'd just like to say that I attended the Montclair Youth Talent Show last week, and it was very well-attended, and there were lots of performers that did an excellent job. The setup was great, and it was very fun to watch. Tanise was one of the judges, and I'm sure she'll, uh, talk about her experience judging, but it was very entertaining. So, thank you for putting that together.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, Councilwoman Martinez is absolutely correct. It was a fantastic event. As typical of their fashion, Human Services did a wonderful, uh, job of, um, decorating, because they're stars. Those, those, those contestants were stars, and they were stars. Everyone was beautiful. Uh, it was, uh, pretty difficult to judge some of them, because, uh, some of them had, like, really great talent, and some were still learners. But, you know, we, it was difficult to make sure that we said some positive stuff and not so much negative stuff. So, um, the two, the two winners were, one of them was a dancer, who, I don't know how this child did it, but the music that she danced to was really, really fast. It had a fast beat, and her little body hit every single beat. Her body did something. And I thought, oh, my goodness, if I tried to do that, they'd have to call 911, because the way she moved, it was just fantastic. And then the other one, uh, sang a song that was, I don't think she missed a note. Her, her tone was perfect, her presence was perfect. She really did an outstanding job. And I was very proud of the people, everybody, all these little kids who got in front of a huge audience. Some adults I know can't get in front of a huge audience and sing or dance, but they did it, and I was really proud of them. So, that was wonderful. And I also would like to report that Councilwoman Martinez and I went to an of the Women Inspiring the Next Generation of Sisterhood event with Senator Rubio. Uh, it was, it seemed like organized chaos. I think you would agree in the beginning. But what was so wonderful about it is there were these girls, and I think, using my eyeballs and my imagination, I think there was probably about 200 girls there. And each of them had to go to several workshops. And the workshops were about etiquette, um, dining etiquette and social etiquette, and healthy relationship, what is a healthy relationship, and how to determine if you're not in a healthy relationship. Um, we talked, they talked about healthcare, and so I got to attend all of those. The one that I didn't get to attend, because I had another commitment, was about finances. So, I talked to somebody from a credit union in, um, Azusa. And he said what he was, what, what his program was gonna be was, there are several, um, stations in the room where he was gonna be. So, they had the students open their phone to an app, and that app told them they had X number of dollars. So, they had to go over to the housing station and decide how much they were gonna spend on housing. And then they had to go over to the transportation station and figure out how much they were gonna spend on a car. And then they had to go to the mall station to see how much were they gonna spend at the mall. And then they had to go to the food station, and I'm told that many of them, by the time they got to the food station, had nothing left. So, they had to go back and reevaluate. Do they really need to spend $5,000 a month for rent just to stay in that mansion? Do they really need a Ferrari, or can they have something that's more moderate that works for them? So, it really was a wonderful program. I was so impressed that I kinda wanna steal some of it and bring it over to Montclair High. It was, it was, the event was at Duarte High School, but we really need to try to duplicate that over at Montclair High, because it was so impactful for, for those students. Watching them in some of the workshops, you know, high school students or some of them are middle school students, they tend to be a little fidgety, but these girls were riveted to the speakers, because it was, they spoke, the speaker spoke to them at their level, and it was all of the information that I didn't get at high school, but it was information that they needed, and I thought that was, Senator Rubio did a fantastic job of organizing that. And I thought it was a one-time event, but then I heard from some of her staff that she had been doing this since she was a teacher, before she was a politician, when she started it way back then, and every year it gets bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. So, I really wanna steal some of her ideas and take them over to Montclair High. Then there's a couple of, um, oh, um, I do want to touch briefly on ICSC. So, um, as you heard, we had a, the City of Montclair had a booth there. But what was really interesting to me is we were surrounded by cities from all over California. And the booths that were across from us had almost not many people coming to see them. And I think the reason for that was is because the City of Montclair was the only, um, the only booth that I saw anyway, that had its own, "This is Montclair" video, "This is our city." And so, there were crowds around that video. So, kudos to our IT department in general, but to Edmund Garcia in particular, because he did such a good job. He filmed the video with, um, drone and showed all the parts of the city and where all the opportunities were. And lots of people stopped at our booth. Well, they, they stopped for the video, but then they had to take one of those monkeys with them, so the monkeys were a huge hit, as Mr. Diaz can probably report. Although, a few people did ask us for the screaming monkeys. Did, so, some, apparently, some years ago, we had monkeys that screamed, and a couple?
They mean flying monkeys.
Yes.
Screaming flying monkeys.
Yes. So, the monkeys were a big hit, but that video is what drew them. So, kudos to, um, the IT department for that. And, uh, lastly, I want to tell you about a couple of events coming up. On October 10th, Oak Park is having a ribbon-cutting event at 10:30, just to celebrate all of the work that they do. The address is at 9029 Vernon Avenue. Again, it's on October the 10th at 10:30. And then also, on October the 17th, there is another, uh, grand reopening ribbon-cutting at Montclair Dennis, and that's at 5182 Moreno Street, which is directly across the street from the mall, kinda in between Gold's Gym and Target, and kinda in that area. So, we're hoping you'll join us that day at noon. Uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Okay, Councilman Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to comment on, um, Mr. Bruce Lance. For those of you that don't know Bruce or who he was, he was a legal counsel for the Monavista Water District. And I believe he was the longest-tenured, um, um, Diane's title. I'm drawing a blank right now for something, not city attorney, but district attorney. Yeah, the longest-serving, um, um, counsel for that district. Before he had retired and, um, enjoyed his downtime, he had created a Bruce Lance Scholarship Fund, and it was to provide scholarships upwards of maybe $2,000 to students, both in Montclair and, of course, the district services, the Northern Affinino, to provide them with educational scholarships. Now, uh, my father, who's a member of the Water District, serves on the committee to help go through the application and help issue those awards. Thankfully, um, just because the district is predominantly Montclair, Montclair students tend to get the, be the main benefactors of those scholarships. So, it was a very polite and kind and thoughtful in giving back of Bruce Lance to do something like that, um, even before he passed. I know that the tradition and the scholarship fund will continue with Monavista Water, um, and we are grateful for, for that. Bruce was definitely a, uh, a very kind, wasn't a man of many words, but when he did speak, he was, um, thoughtful, deliberate in his words, and always offered a, a, an encouraging, um, a comment to, to those that he spoke to. We, uh, did a moment of silence earlier, uh, to commemorate the one-year anniversary of the, um, attack on Israel on October 7th of 2023. And I would just simply like to remind folks that, to this day, there still remains 101 hostages.
Point of order. We, we took a vote earlier this year. Councilmember Lopez voted that he would like a resolution not to take any action on items related to international or national affairs. So, this is not a communication that, according to him, is related to the City of Montclair, so.
Well, we'll just have Councilman Lopez finish his comments. And the, uh, the, uh, moment of silence was just, it was for everybody that's who's died in the Middle East, not just, uh, one particular location. But go ahead, finish your comments, please.
Sure. A year ago today, of course, Israel was attacked, and there still remains 101 hostages held, hostages remain in captivity, away from their loved ones and family. And I would like for that, uh, to be, to be noted and for folks not to forget that. I, I will say that all this could have been avoided had the agreement and the peaceful agreement on October 6th of that year still been in place. But, of course, one side attacked, and that is where we are today. And that's where we have the conflict today, and it's unfortunate. It could have been avoided. So, with that, I, I would like for my comments to at least reflect that, those that passed in this conflict in the past year and those still have held in captivity are not forgotten. And, uh, I personally, I'm not speaking on behalf of the other four. I personally stand with those hostages and against the atrocities that were committed. And then a point of personal privilege on a personal note. In two days, Monavista Water District Board Member Tony Lopez, who is, of course, my father, it is his birthday, and, um, I wanted to wish him an early happy birthday. But in addition to that, congratulate him on his automatic four years on the Monavista Water District. Those three candidates on the board, Sandra Rose, Manny Martinez, and my father, Tony Lopez, were unchallenged. So, they will be reappointed or re-s sworn into a free four-year term. And, uh, wanted to congratulate him on that and wish him a very happy birthday. And in those 21 years, thank him for his service to our residents and the Chino residents in his many capacities with the district as vice president, auditor, and, um, on the many committees that he serves within, uh, the Water District. So, um, very early happy birthday to my father. With that, Mr. Mayor, I am done.
Thank you. Councilman Martinez, yes, one else to say?
Yes. In response to Councilmember Lopez's comments, I just want to say to anyone listening, you know, I, I, um, you know, certainly feel for the 100,000-plus Palestinian and Lebanese people that have been injured since, in, in the last year, and the 21,000 that have been killed. And to have a moment of silence and discuss your feelings about one side versus the other, you know, tells our residents that you care about someone's life and not everybody's life. So.
That's fine. I mean, uh, Councilman Lopez was speaking for himself, not for the city council. Mike Rex, the Attorney Robbins.
Well, this is, you know, a, a time for communications for us to
I understand that.
to the city.
Yeah.
This isn't for us to be on our high horse, and if
I take great offense to that. That's no high horse.
Well, let's just, you know, uh, Well, let's just, you know, the resolution, I believe, is relates to city council taking action. And there was no council action occurring. It's always important that this portion of council, we stick to what we did, events, brief, just brief comments, and not to gauge too much on policy discussions or anything else. That's none in preview of the City of Montclair. So I respect both and I think this is a good time to move on. Anything else, Councilmember, City Manager, City Attorney, Robbins?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, appreciate it then. So with that, we are now going into closed session. Thank you.